I'd like to call the Monday, November 22nd, 2021 Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of law which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you and welcome everybody this evening. And for those watching at home, Mr. Mallon, if you please do a roll call.
Absolutely Chair. Commissioner Beal.
Commissioner Beal, present.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Here.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Honeycutt.
Here.
Commissioner Banks.
Present.
Commissioner Billups.
Present.
Commissioner Peel.
Present.
Commissioner Graham.
Present.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Present.
Commissioner Rohr.
Present.
And Chair Sanderson.
Present.
Alright. Ten out of ten.
Alright. Tonight's agenda consists of Item 1A, the meeting minutes from November 8th Planning Commission Meeting. Items 2, 3, and 5, Chapman Ridge rezoning PD concept plan and preliminary plat. Item 4, site plan design review for Rancho's Mexican Restaurant. Item 6, master plan for Community America Credit Union. Item 7, preliminary plat for Derrick James Estates. Item 8 of the business and item 9 is German. At this time, entertain a motion for the consent agenda for the approval of the November 8th, 2021 meeting minutes.
So moved.
To have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stokenberry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. I'll now open the public hearing. For agendas items 2 and 3, rezoning RZ 0921-7956 and PD concept plan PDC 0921-7957 for Chapman Ridge Second Phase. We'll also hear the preliminary plat PP 0921-7958. And I would ask for exhibits from City Attorney Jack DeSummer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record for RZ 0921-7956. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, applicant plans with attachments. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November 6th, 2021. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, title for land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. And for PDC 0921-7957, I offer the following exhibits into the record. 1, staff report with attachments. 2, applicant plans with attachment. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November 6th, 2021. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, title for land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. And at this time, I'd ask for staff presentation. Mr. Wright.
Yep, thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening, a request for rezoning PD concept plan and preliminary plat for Chapman Ridge Phase 2, which is a proposed 66-unit townhouse-style development and approximately 25,000-square-foot neighborhood business center, which covers 14.2 acres. Properties located north of Southeast Culver Road, both to the northwest and northeast of Southeast Chapman Ridge Drive. The property is currently a mix of commercial zoning districts and includes a small area of two-family zoning. The first request this evening is to rezone 7.48 acres to MF10 PD, which is low-density multifamily and part of a planned development. And then 3.97 acres to NB PD, which is a neighborhood business plan development. The existing NB that is shown in the light purple color will remain neighborhood business, but it will be added to the PD. And then the GB, SO, and the little piece of two-family over here will all be rezoned to MF10 and included in the same PD. The second request is for a PD concept plan, which covers the entire 14.2-acre property and includes all the areas to be rezoned, as well as an additional 2.78 acres at the northeast corner of the site, which was part of the Chapman, Chapman Ridge First Phase, which is a duplex development that is currently under construction to the north of the site. And the main reason for including that is because there are some minor modifications with the open space system as part of that. No other rezoning is required and there are no buildings being constructed on that site, other than what's previously been approved. This development plan includes seven lots and two tracts with a total of 66 residential units for a density of 8.82 units per acre, which is under the 10-unit max. The plan includes 14 fourplexes and five duplexes, and approximately 25,000 square feet of neighborhood business located in three buildings, two of which are at the northeast corner of Culver Road and Chapman Ridge Drive, and one is at the northwest corner of that same intersection. Access to the site is provided through an extension of Southeast 3rd Street from Culver Road, as well as Southeast Little Garden Lane from the Gardens at Chapman Farms Development. All other roads are coming from the first phase of Chapman Ridge, or the commercial properties will connect to existing Chapman Ridge Drive. An eight-foot trail is being proposed along Culver Road that will extend from where it terminates currently at the eastern edge of the Gardens at Chapman Farms duplex neighborhood, and will be extended all along the frontage to eventually connect to Mason Elementary. Additionally, an eight-foot trail will be constructed on the west side of Chapman Ridge Drive and a five-foot sidewalk on the other side. Those will eventually connect into Rusko Rider Park when it is developed. And all on the remaining local streets within the residential portion, there are five-foot sidewalks proposed on both sides of the street. Since the plan includes a mix of duplexes and fourplexes with multiple buildings on each lot, the residential portion of this development best fits within the apartment complex building type. The site meets most of those development standards for an apartment complex, however, the site and rear setbacks cannot be met on all buildings based on the location of the property lines and the district lines that are shared with the first phase to the north and east. Therefore, as part of the concept plan, the applicant is requesting modifications to reduce those side setbacks to between 3 and 15 feet, where they are adjacent to two-family residential. And I'll quickly go through the buildings that that does impact. That includes a reduction from 20 to 15 feet here at Building 26 at the northwest corner. Reduction to 14 feet for Building 22. A reduction to 3 feet for Building 24. Reduction to 7 feet for Building 39, and a reduction to 6 feet for Building 38. As you can see, none of these setbacks encroach on any of the buildings that are already approved. They still maintain the 20-foot separation between them. They're just requesting this because of where the property line is, rather than relocate that property line, or have to go in and replat, or amend the plan for the first phase to make that match. This is an easier request than having to go rework that entire plan, when the building footprints themselves aren't going to change. Additionally, they are requesting a reduction in the rear setback, which is required to be 20 feet to 15 feet for Buildings 22 and 23 here on the north block of Rock Garden Lane. All other building-type standards can be met for the proposal, again, except for those few buildings that are around the perimeter of the site adjacent to the first phase of Chapman Ridge. Apartment complexes are required a minimum of 40% open space for the entire site. The site has provided 57.54% open space. And apartment complexes are also required 10% active open space. This site has provided trails to connect to Chapman Ridge Drive, which totals 10.42% of the site as active open space, which meets the 10% requirement. Landscape buffers are required along all property boundaries, except for a portion of the west property line, where it is adjacent to other multifamily zoning. Buffers are required between multifamily and two-family zoning districts. However, the applicant is requesting to waive the buffering requirements for the areas where those buffers are adjacent to the first phase of Chapman Ridge. It is the applicant's intent that both the first and second phases be treated as one neighborhood with shared amenities. Therefore, installing those landscape buffers along those shared property lines would create division within the neighborhood. So those property boundaries where they're requesting to waive would be this north property line, this northeastern property line, and then this, again, another north, northeastern property line. There will be also a buffer waived for the boundary between Lot 6 and 5. Main reason for that is the property line is right in the middle of the detention basin. There will be some open space landscaping around the west side of the detention basin, and then additional retaining wall and landscaping to, adjacent to the commercial district. So that detention basin with the landscaping surrounding it will create a sufficient buffer to meet that intent of the code. Conceptual building elevations have been provided for both the fourplexes and the duplexes, all of which are two-story units with a mix of single and two-car front-loaded garages. Exterior building materials include a mix of materials, including various masonry materials, as well as various types of siding, including horizontal battened board siding and shingle siding, to give each unit its own architectural character. Site elevations also include building projections with bay windows. And then the exterior, or the rear, along the Culver Road units will also include some additional materials and gables to dress up the facade that is visible from Culver Road. And again, the duplex portion is the same style, just cut in half compared to the fourplex. Total garage coverage for this, there is a maximum 25% coverage for the facade, and this building does meet that, or is under that at 19.4%. So that requirement has been met. And all other residential building design standards will be reviewed as part of the final plan, site plan design review, and will be required to meet the code at that time. For parking, off-street parking is required for each unit, a minimum of two spaces. For units, as every unit has a garage, as well as a driveway space, the minimum would be two spaces for the single-car garage, and then for the two-car garages, they will have a minimum of four spaces provided, two in the garage and two in the driveway. So the parking requirement has been met, however, there is a maximum driveway coverage that the property does, the development does exceed. Driveway coverage cannot exceed 25% of the front yard area and the access drive to the street. There are several blocks that exceed that requirement, which are delineated by the numbers that are shown here at the corners, the largest of which is a 56% coverage here on the south side of Rock Garden Lane. The applicant is also requesting to widen the driveways from a minimum, a maximum of 24 feet at the street to 31.1 feet. That is to, again, accommodate the three-car garage width, where you have a two-car and a single-car garage on the same driveway. Without these modifications, the plan would have to be significantly altered to accommodate side or rear-loaded garages, or provide other internal parking areas or private streets to meet that requirement. Lastly, on the commercial component, conceptual images have been provided, which include a mix of masonry and architectural metals. Building enhancements include awnings and full-story windows at ground level. Additional site enhancements, which are shown on the site plan, include outdoor seating plazas and pedestrian connections to both the public sidewalk network and future parkland. As part of the PD concept, the applicant is requesting to allow a mix of land uses that are appropriate in a neighborhood business zoning, which are included as a condition of approval with the PD concept plan. Those uses include small retail and small office, restaurants, personal services, banks, grocery stores, artisan, micro-manufacturing, and food production limited uses, all of which are allowed in the neighborhood business zoning district when included with the PD as requested. Staff did review the rezoning request and finds that the proposed rezoning to low-density multifamily with a neighborhood business center is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the S1 area plan, which classifies the property as a mixed-density neighborhood. The proposed land uses are complementary to existing and previously approved developments in the vicinity, which include a mix of housing and zoning districts. Rezoning most of the property to residential will help provide additional population to support future commercial development, including the neighborhood business center that has been reserved at the intersection of Culver and Chapman Ridge Drive. And staff reviewed the concept plan and finds that the plan provides for the development of a cohesive townhouse-style apartment complex that builds off of existing and approved developments to the north and west, with the adjacent neighborhood business center. The requested modifications to the side and rear setbacks, landscape buffers, and driveway coverage and widths are warranted by the site location, as well as the development pattern that it is connecting to. Strict adherence to the code would require some buildings to be removed or relocated, creating inconsistent gaps in the streetscape and unusually large corner setbacks. Modifications to the driveway access and driveway coverage provide a housing product that is comparable to similar duplex and fourplex developments, however they do provide additional garage and driveway parking. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the concept plan with five conditions, and approval of the preliminary plat with six conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I might. Mr. Wright, you were talking about in Lot 1 there, the buffering between, and what was the, I mean, wouldn't it be advantageous to the other people living in the other buildings to have some buffering between the, being so close since we're...
So there was already, this property boundary here?
Yes.
So in the, and I think it shows up in the landscape plan, I'll pull that up.
I can't, I couldn't remember.
But there was already a landscape buffer approved that will be, that would be installed for the duplex portion, so there will already be landscaping in there.
That's what I wanted to check.
And even if that buffer were waived, they would still have some landscaping in the backyard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners? Alright, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? So you need to be sworn in and then state your name and address, please, for the record.
Just wanted to get this one in and not give this page, so if you could hear something else.
I do. Tyler Sully, PO Box 6437, Lee Summit, Missouri 64064. So the plan that we have here tonight is very similar to the plan we presented here a few weeks ago. The, when we took the, when we took the plan to City Council, we had some conversations with a couple of the council members, and they, City Council was pretty adamant about leaving some commercial zoning in this location. So Matt, if you can pull up the zoning map, really everything that we presented at our last, last presentation is pretty much the same here, same unit types, same cohesiveness to the other development that's out there. You know, the area shaded in gold that's to the north there is what you see as in a construction right now. So really, the only change here is the neighborhood business area that's the light purple like Matt referenced. We plan on keeping that commercial zoning district in place. Some of the council members had thought that at some point, whenever the area to the north develops as the, as the city park, having some resources and having some amenities for people when they come visit the park would be a good thing. So, you know, things like maybe some small coffee shops, or restaurants, things like that. So there's a couple acres there. I don't remember what the total is, but in our previous plan, we had that shown as being all residential use, and we've taken that back to a commercial zoning, neighborhood business. And, and like Matt said, it'll accommodate up to, you know, 25,000 square feet, I think, of commercial use. So don't know exactly what those plans are yet. We don't have anybody in place to take that over or to build for, but obviously, when somebody comes along, we'll be back in here for, you know, development plan for what their use is. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant by the Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Is anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? So you know, any further discussion from the Commissioners? I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion for the rezoning. Chair, Commissioner Peel.
I move that rezoning request, RZ 0921-7956, for Chapman Ridge Second Phase, be approved as submitted by staff.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banks. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Aye.
So that item will be recommended and heard at the City Council meeting on their Monday meeting, December 6th, at 6:00 PM. I now ask for a motion for the PD concept plan.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that planned development concept plan, PDC 0921-7957, for Chapman Ridge Second Phase, with five conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. Have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Honeycutt.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Beal.
Aye.
Oh, and Chair Sanderson.
Aye.
Sorry. Alright. Alright, and also that item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday's, December 6th meeting at 6:00 PM. And I would now ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that preliminary plat, PP 0921-7958, for Chapman Ridge Second Phase, with six conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. Have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with the six conditions. Alright, next on my agenda is item 4, and I'm gonna open the public hearing for the site plan design review with alternative development standards, SPDR 1021-8017, and ask for exhibits from City Attorney Jack DeSummer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, applicant plans with attachments. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November 6th, 2021. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, title for land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. And ask for staff's presentation. Mr. Wright?
Thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening is a request for a site plan design review with alternative development standards for Rancho's Mexican Restaurant at 803 Northwest 7 Highway. Subject property covers approximately a little over, a little under a third of an acre and is located west of Northwest 7 Highway, between Northwest South Outer Road and Northwest Hearns Avenue. The original site plan design review for the site was approved in 2004 for a two-tenant building to accommodate a nail salon and a drive-through-only restaurant. The drive-through-only restaurant closed, and the second tenant space was used as an additional space for a nail salon for at least the past 12 years. The applicant is proposing to reuse the entire building for a restaurant with both dine-in and drive-through options. The original site plan design review approval specifically stated that the site could not accommodate both a dine-in and a drive-through restaurant use due to the limited size of the site for parking and stacking. Staff is reviewing the proposal as a change of use, which requires the site to be brought into compliance with parking, stacking, landscaping, and buffering. To accommodate the new restaurant use with both dine-in and drive-through customers, three alternative development standards are needed. These include a waiver of the 25-foot landscape buffer at the rear of the property adjacent to single-family. This buffer was installed at the time of development, however, was paved for additional parking around 2009, based on past aerials. This was completed without any planning approvals or permits. There is currently a six-foot privacy fence without any, currently a six-foot privacy fence that provides screening from adjacent residential, however, all landscaping has been removed. The second alternative development standard is a reduction in the vehicle stacking space requirement from eight spaces to six spaces. That is the number of parking spaces that is required from the pickup window to at least eight spaces that can comfortably stack. However, there are only six spaces that are uninterrupted. These last two spaces potentially create conflict with the access drive into the T-Mobile site. The third alternative development standard is to reduce the minimum drive aisle width from 26 feet to approximately 14 feet along the shared access drive on the north side of the property, as shown here. The architect has provided the arrows showing the approximate location of traffic movements. However, as you can see, there is overlap where there is the potential for traffic conflict entering and exiting the site. Additionally, the six parking spaces that are located to the rear of the building may also, can only be accessed through the drive-through. They have labeled those as employee parking. However, if a customer or an employee would need to leave when the drive-through has stacking, they would not be able to leave that, leave the parking space until the line has died down. So that is the, those are the three alternative development standards that are needed to accommodate the site. There are no other changes proposed to the site, other than the change of use. Summary landscaping was recently completed along the frontage of the property, but an additional two street trees will need to be added to meet the landscaping requirement along the frontage. Staff reviewed the request for alternative development standards under the review criteria and finds that the request will not better serve the public interest, as there is not sufficient space on the site to operate both a dine-in restaurant with a drive-through. Although the use is allowed by zoning, the site must meet the parking and stacking spaces to accommodate the use. The limited size of the site does not allow both parking and stacking to be met. Staff has concerns that approval of the alternative development standards, which will allow the site to operate as proposed, will lead to additional traffic circulation issues, as well as access issues to both 7 Highway, and could be detrimental to the T-Mobile site to the north, as this is also their only point of access. The drive-through component in particular will create stacking issues that will block access to the site. Overall, staff does not believe that the request meets the review criteria, and will have a negative impact on public safety and general welfare due to the access and stacking issues. Staff also reviewed the site plan design review request under the review criteria and finds that the request is not in compliance with the code as outlined as part of the alternative development standards request. Based on the review criteria for both the alternative development standards and the site plan design review, and the reasons stated by staff in the staff report and as presented this evening, staff does not recommend approval of the site plan design review with alternative development standards for 803 Northwest 7 Highway. If the Planning Commission does approve the request, staff has included two conditions for your consideration. And I will stand for any questions.
Alright. Are there any questions for staff by Commissioners? Commissioner Billups?
Do we know, you said that the, this parking along the rear of the site was added at some point with no approvals or anything like that? Do we have any idea whether it was actually constructed according to code? Or will there be any, I guess, checking to see if it was?
We do not know if it was constructed to code. We know that it was installed sometime based on going back in aerials, probably 2008, 2009. It appears that it may have happened af, around the time or shortly after T-Mobile was constructed, so it may have been a concern about their own parking situation with T-Mobile being added north of them. being added north of them. And I don't believe, Adam, if you have any, any additional requirements that you will have prior to them being able to occupy the site.
Well, the original plan identified that area to be used for stormwater detention, and, and that's not what's happened now, so there's no detention on this site. That was going to be my second question. And so, I, I believe that was one of the conditions was, you know, if this were to be approved, it would need to accommodate that detention. So, we've asked for a stormwater study to identify the required volume for this site, so.
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
We don't believe the applicant is here.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, yes? If the commissioners have any questions that they would want to ask the applicants and they would be maybe making their decision based upon the responses, then could continue it, but they were given notice of this hearing.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion by the commissioners? Commissioner Billups?
This is a really, really tight spot. And in addition to the six spaces along the rear, the four spaces on the side with the way they're angled and everything else, you're going to have to go through the drive-through lane to get out of those spaces as well, which just further compounds the, the problems. I, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to hear what an applicant would, how he would defend this, but I have no, I, I see no way that this could work. It's just too tight.
Any other further discussion? Commissioner Banks?
I patronize both buildings, when it was T. and Nails and also T-Mobile. T-Mobile, it's horrible to get in and out of the back, and you have to go through that drive-through when you're leaving, and in T. and Nails, when it was T. and Nails, it's hard to even get in the front to park. The only way I could see this working is if they take out the restaurant and take out all the parking on the side in the back, and just make it, have the employees park in the front, and make it just strictly a drive-through. But otherwise, there's no way I'd approve this, because you're going to have off-site parking, and then they're going to walk over, they can't park at T-Mobile, T-Mobile's open until 8 o'clock, so then they're going to go to other businesses to try to park to walk over to here. So, I, I'm sorry, I, that's why I'm going to have to vote in opposition to this.
Okay. Any other discussion by the commissioners? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion, but before we do, I, one thing I might suggest is if, since it kind of gets confusing about recommending approval or denial, I would maybe recommend we, if somebody makes a motion and they vote for approval that we do, you can vote nay to deny, and aye for approval, so. Hope that's clear. All right, so, ask for a motion on the site, site plan design review with alternative development standards.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Billups?
Although I do plan on voting nay, I will move for approval to bring it to a vote of SPDR-10218017 with the two staff conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Billups, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rohr?
I vote nay to approve it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Commissioner Billups?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Nay.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
No.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Nay.
And Commissioner Beal?
Nay.
And Chair Sandersen?
Nay.
Okay. So, that motion was denied. All right, next item on the agenda is item six, master alternative sign plan for Community America Credit Union, and I would ask for staff's presentation by Ms. Bright.
Before you this evening is a request for approval of a master sign plan for the installation of a flagpole for Community America Credit Union at 1800 Northwest South Outer Road. The property is generally located at the southeast corner of Northwest South Outer Road and Northwest 19th Street. It is zoned general business and includes approximately 5.72 acres. The proposal includes installing a flagpole in an island located approximately 50 feet from the primary entrance of the building. Community America currently has one existing monument sign and two building signs, all of which were approved with administrative sign permits. The master sign plan is necessary because the flagpole is proposed to be more than 30 feet from the building's primary entrance. Staff believes their request is warranted since the lot is approximately 5.72 acres and the flagpole will still be closer to the building entrance than the property lines. There is a maximum of two flags allowed on the flagpole, and of those two, only one is allowed to display a commercial message. Staff reviewed the applications and found that the only code deviation was that the flagpole would be located 50 feet from the primary entrance compared to the allowed 30 feet per the UDC. Staff recommends approval of the master sign plan with one condition, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners? All right, see, now, I would ask for a motion on the master alternative sign plan.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the master alternative sign plan for Community America Credit Union ASP-10-21-8013 with the one staff condition.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Beal, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carried with the one condition. All right, next item on the agenda is item seven, preliminary plat for Derek James Estates, and I would ask for a staff's presentation by Ms. Bright.
The last request on the agenda this evening is for approval of a preliminary plat for Derek James Estate, a one-lot, single-family subdivision. The lot covers approximately 0.87 acres and is currently zoned SF7. It is located south of Northwest RD Mize Road and west of 7 Highway. Contingent on approval of the preliminary plat, the applicant will final plat the property for the development of a single-family house. The proposed lot meets the requirements as a detached house, large lot, which has a minimum area of 12,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 100 feet. The adjacent single-family houses were developed prior to the establishment of minimal, minimum livable floor area requirements. The most comparable minimum floor area classification for this lot is a 1,200 square foot minimum based on the adjacent parcels. The minimum must be noted on the final plat. A five-foot ADA compliant sidewalk will be required to be installed at the time of final plating. Staff reviewed the request and finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with the UDC requirements. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with three conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks?
Is the city planning on adding sidewalks to that side of the street? Because they would be the only ones with a sidewalk.
I would defer to Adam Hilvedick.
We do not have a plan to fill in with any sidewalks, but any future development would be also required to fill in those with sidewalks, so, it, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, they'll be the only ones on that side with the sidewalk, so I just wondered if we were planning on where adding...
There's, no, there's not an, an additional plan, like a sidewalk plan through there other than just in making the city more walkable, so, it would be contingent, it, it would be future developments that would, that would bring those sidewalks in at this current time.
I encourage my council pro tem to maybe possibly get a grant since it's across from a school to add on to this sidewalk on that other side, then. There you go, another project, right?
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Commissioner Billups?
Staff, a question doesn't actually pertain to the preliminary plat itself, but the application says that this is going to be a residential pole barn house. Is that something that's approved, allowable by the city? I, I've never...
It's a style.
As a style?
Yeah, as long as it meets the building code and all setbacks, we do not have any specific single-family residential design requirements in the city, so it just needs to meet the, all setbacks and driveway coverage, those types of items and landscaping, but there's not any specific design or material requirements for single-family other than just meeting the building code.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, Chair, there is one on wall that, a pole barn type looking house.
It's a garage, not a house.
No, it's a house. This is, it's just a style, it's called a style. Pole barn style.
Brings to mind metal si, metal sides and metal roof and...
No.
Any other, any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Peel?
I believe there is a correction to the number of conditions on this particular application. I think it's listed as two, and I believe it's three, so whoever makes a motion will need to make that verbal correction.
Three conditions.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. Okay. All right, would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
We're good.
Okay. Any other further discussion by the commissioners? All right, then I would entertain a motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair?
Commissioner Beal?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the prelim, preliminary plat for the Derek James Estate PP-11-21-8019 with the three conditions.
Thank you. Have a motion from Commissioner Beal, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with the three conditions.
All right, other business. We will have a meeting on Monday, December 13th. We do have a number of items, including several public hearings, to get through, so we will have a meeting on the 13th.
Okay, any other staff business? Okay. Any other business by the commissioners?
Hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Stokenberry?
Did you send out, Matt, did you, or somebody send out an email about the Thursday before Christmas or right after? What, what was that email? If we were available?
Yes, I, I did send out an email to the commission regarding Monday, December 27th to see if we would have a quorum, and based on the responses that I received, we, we do have a quorum for that meeting. However, we are waiting to see if we do get any applications. That cutoff is on December 2nd, and we have notified applicants that, that that meeting may be continued. So, if, if something, if you have responded to me that you could make it and something comes up, please let me know in, in the next couple of weeks prior to that cutoff, just so we can plan accordingly.
Commissioner Billups, do you have something?
I, I was just going to perform my duty here as a downtown representative and remind everybody that November 30th is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting ceremony at 5:15, I believe. So, everybody come down and see the lights get turned on all the way up and down Main Street.
All right. Any other business by the commissioners? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Honeycutt, second from Commissioner Graham, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that means adjourn, good night.